Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Record of attendance, Linda. Declarations of conflict of interest, anyone? Approval of agenda, additions or deletions, and I have 10 A and B that we have copies of with the information attached. Collection of source separated municipal solid waste tender and the tender for the Counselor Mooney?
Thank you, Worship. I'd like to add to the agenda Fracking Water and Atlantic Industrial Services of Debert, please.
Got anything with them?
Do you want a motion?
You've got motions like that we can have?
No.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion for the approval of the agenda with the additions.
Maybe Worship, if we could move up the presentations to...
Yep, we can do that. We'll move seven up before the priorities. Okay?
Motioning to accept the agenda with the additions.
Moved and seconded. Any more discussion?
Questions?
Questions, been called, all those in favor. Contrary, motion carried. Presentations. We have Western Counties Regional Library. Welcome. If you want to just come and have a seat, the microphone, he will make sure that you have a microphone. You can, and you have 10 minutes.
Yeah.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Erin Camo and I'm the Regional Library Director at Western Counties Regional Library. I've provided you with a handout of programs and services that we offer at the Yarmouth Branch. So my presentation is going to focus mainly on what we do in Yarmouth, but I am going to give you an overview of how libraries are run in the province. And just so, in case you're wondering why I'm here, our board that's made up of municipal councils thought it was a good idea. It had been a few years since the library had come to present what services we do offer in your community. So I've been going out to all municipal and town councils to just give an overview of what it is that libraries do today. So to begin, public libraries were founded through the Antigone-ish movement in order to promote rural libraries, rural services in the province. And by 1981, all municipalities had joined in the public library system. So today, there are 78 libraries in nine regions in the province. Western Counties Regional Library accounts for Digby County, Yarmouth County, and Shelburne County, and we have 10 branches within those counties. All regions are governed by individual boards, and the boards are made up of municipal and town councillors, two provincial appointees, and major stakeholders. So for our region, Yarmouth Public Library and Museum, better known as YPL, and Shelburne Building Association are on our board because they own the library buildings in those towns. So the libraries receive funding from three main sources. The province provides 71% of the funding, municipalities and towns provide 26%, and each regional board is required to raise 3% of their own operating budget. And we rely mostly on donations from businesses and patrons and also from grant monies that we get through grants to reach our 3% target. Some of you may be familiar with our Adopt a Book campaign, which is a biannual campaign that we have, and that brings in around $35,000 in donations every two years. We also receive a French language grant for serving Acadian populations in Clare and Argyle, which is an excess, it's a grant over and above the provincial grant that we receive. So the funding is received to purchase new books and materials, to upgrade public computers. In the past, the federal CAP grant allowed us, gave us money to update, purchase new computers for the CAP program, the public access in the libraries. In 2012, that program was cut, so that fell onto the library's responsibilities was to keep those computers upgraded because they are neat, they are used. We also use the funding to provide local programming and services and for all other operating expenses, including the rent of our headquarters here in Yarmouth and the salaries of our staff. So for the Yarmouth Branch, the branch is open 30.5 hours a week here in Yarmouth, open evenings and weekends as well. We employ five people, both on a full-time and part-time basis, and also we have a few reserves as well. There are approximately 5,500 cardholders in the Yarmouth Branch, so that would include the town and the municipality, but we can't make that division just because of the way that we keep our records. And with our provincially shared lending system, we're able to offer a selection of 2 million books and other items. So in recent years, there's been new developments with libraries in the province where we've, the public libraries and the university and college libraries have gotten together and we provide access to all materials to all Nova Scotians. We don't necessarily have one card, but we're able to go into any institution and any patron around the province is able to go, let's say at Dalhousie University, borrow a book and return it in Yarmouth or from Yarmouth or anything like that. So it's become, the access is a lot better than what it was years ago. And in 2013-14, people in the area borrowed around 71,000 items from the library in Yarmouth. So that's quite a significant number. And while most people do come through our doors to borrow books, they also come to use the computers. Wi-Fi is quite popular. We've actually seen an increase in usage in our Wi-Fi. They do come in to participate in programs. Outside groups come in to use the program room. We do have a nice program room at the library. They also still come in to study and work on projects. We have found an increase in the use of the reference room. A lot of older adults and mature students are doing a lot of distance education studying, and they still use the reference room in order to go in, use our internet and study there. And there's also the socialization factor. Some do come in just to socialize, read the newspaper and such. So while we offer a variety of programs in-house, such as children's storytimes, reading clubs, technology training and such, we also are quite involved in the community, and wherever possible, we try to partner with community organizations at the local level. So just to give you a few examples, we do help organize the seniors expo every year, and as part of that, we do provide workshops. Usually, it's in technology workshops during the event. We get positive feedback from that, so we continue to provide that service. Last year, we worked with the Art Gallery of Nova Scotia, the Western Branch, to offer a program on author and illustrator Barbara Reed. And also this summer, we partnered with the ARC to produce a play called A Most Generous Gift, which was performed at both the ARC and the library. And it was just to add something for people who came in off the boat for something for them to do, they had a series of plays. Also, over the years, we've developed some partnerships to help us extend our reach to citizens. Through a partnership with Immigration, Settlement, and Integration Services, we offer our program room to the coordinator who is based out of Bridgewater, so that she has a contact with local newcomers, so that she can provide information sessions. We also, we partner with the local RCMP and schools to facilitate the Wow! Reading Challenge, and that was a challenges, it's a challenge that encourages children to read throughout through the school year. And it's developed from, by an RCMP officer, he's named John Kennedy, he's in Pikto Antigone-ish. He developed the program seven or eight years ago. He had read a study where low literacy rates were correlated with crime, so he developed the program in an effort to try to raise literacy rates in schools. So in the last seven years, we've given over 11,000 books in prizes to children in the tri-counties. And Yarmouth was actually the first municipality to go through the program, and we continue, all the, all the schools in the county are involved in that program, and they seem to quite, they like it. They get free books. Kids get free books, it's sort of nice. We also continue with the CAP program. While the federal funding for that has been cut, the provincial funding remains, so we're able to hire CAP students during the summer and the winter months to provide technology training. So in terms of services, I'll go through these quickly. The deliveries to schools and seniors, staff in Yarmouth provide deliveries monthly. They will go out to the schools, provide book, boxes of books for the children, and they will also go into the seniors' homes. And depending on the home or the residence, they provide either a box of books to seniors or they provide one-on-one service where they will go in and talk directly to the seniors to see what they're, what they like to read, and then give them books according to their, to their interests. We also, in 2010, we introduced ebooks and downloadable audiobooks to our services, and since then, that service has increased by 150%. So, and while the service of ebook downloads, the usage has gone up, the usage in borrowing print materials hasn't necessarily gone down because we're seeing that a lot of our patrons, they're, they're aging, it's an aging population, and they're requiring more specialized service, so things like large print and audiobooks and things like that. So to recap, libraries not only lend out books, they provide a range of programs and services. And given the current economic climate, like everybody else, we do have our challenges. So we're finding that our funding has remained the same for a number of years, and the operating costs continue to increase. That's the same all around, I think. But it does inhibit our ability to develop new services that would better serve the, suit our patrons. But regardless of these challenges, we do have really good long-term staff that are dedicated to library service, and we also have patrons that are willing to help when they can. So we're really thankful for that. And we're also especially grateful for Yarmouth Public Library and Museum, because they do provide us with our building and they do maintain the building, and they continue to support the library that way. We're also fortunate to continue to have support from the towns and the municipalities. So we do have a representative here, it's Ken Langill, and we're, we're really grateful to have him on board and to be able to participate in that way. So with that, I'd like to thank you for the support that you do give to the library. The patrons certainly appreciate it, and so do we. And with that, I'd like to ask if you have any questions?
Any questions? Good. Thank you very much for coming in.
Okay, thank you.
Yarmouth County Agricultural Society. Welcome, Amy.
I guess I have to do this by myself.
There's your support.
Okay, good afternoon. Thank you for allowing the Yarmouth County Agricultural Society to make a presentation to your council today. The Agricultural Society is a not-for-profit volunteer organization whose members dedicate thousands of hours organizing, preparing, and running the Western Nova Scotia Exhibition. The exhibition plays an important role in the town's summer economic infrastructure. And in case you're wondering what the Western Nova Scotia Exhibition does for you and our community, we host one of the largest summer community events in the town of the municipality of Yarmouth, and we have for the last 155 years. We include 75 volunteers and 9,000 volunteer hours. We have a five-day attendance of 20,000-plus people, bringing people from the valley around a Bridgewater to the town and municipality of Yarmouth. We support local businesses when buying materials and products. Patrons and exhibitors help increase sales at local hotels, restaurants, grocery retailers, and other businesses within the town of Yarmouth over the length of our event. We allow several not-for-profit community groups to raise funds for their causes. For example, we have Dawn Usher's Charity Group. We have Ground Search and Rescue, the Anti-Bullying Society, Mackenzie School of Dance, and Kids Act, to name the ones that were there in 2014. We provide jobs for local residents. We include over 20 different categories of events and competitions, which provide a place for people to showcase their animals, arts and crafts, musical talents, and much more. We also produce events that range from traditional agricultural shows and activities to high-energy entertainment for community enjoyment. It takes a community of volunteers to build an exhibit, an event like the Western Nova Scotia Exhibition. We just held the 155th Western Nova Scotia Exhibition at the Mariner Center back in July and August. As you are aware, the Agricultural Society was told after the 2013 exhibition that we would not be allowed to place dirt inside the Mariner Center, and that we would be required to hold all our agricultural and motorized events outside. 2014 was the first year for this new format, and like most outdoor events, we were susceptible to the weather. And whether it was bad luck or not, every day of Exhibition Week was dark, drizzly, and damp. This hurt our attendance at the entrance gate, which in turn was reflected in a decrease in our gate revenue. And this is shown in our financial statements, which were previously distributed before today's meetings. However, for argument's sake, you might say rain doesn't always ruin an event. For example, our Ox Teamsters. They love a little rain as it greases up their pulling track and allows them to haul a bigger load than normal. However, paying spectators do not like to sit and watch events in the rain, which in turn caused people to stay home and not come to the exhibition those days. In preparation of the weather, the Agricultural Society took a risk this year, and we invested in five nights of musical entertainment instead of our traditional three nights. This was done hoping spectators would still attend the exhibition even in rainy weather. However, this was not the case, and on the two days it did rain, Wednesday and Saturday, our attendance numbers were down considerably on Wednesday, and Saturday, which is our normally highest attended day, was reduced by 50%. The Agricultural Society's major sources of income are gated admission, corporate sponsorship, government grants, and commercial rentals, with gated admission being the biggest portion of our income. In light of a reduction in gated admission of $10,084, we are now facing a deficit of approximately $15,000, which is preventing us from paying all our expenses, in particular, our rental fee to the Mariner Center, which is $16,035. We are here today asking for some assistance in the form of a grant to help cover the cost of this expense. The Agricultural Society has faced smaller losses for the last few years, and we are now in the position of asking whether we can continue organizing an exhibition and pull out of our current financial situation. We recognize that in light of our economical situation in southwest Nova Scotia, money is tight for everyone, and relying on gate admission fees to pay the bills is not feasible. The Agricultural Society does not want to see 2014 as the last year of the Western Nova Scotia Exhibition. We are currently devising a fundraising program, looking for corporate donations, and considering the sale of fixed assets, such as our fencing and our kitty farm structure, which are currently located on the Mariner Center property. These options will help offset our loss, but fundraising $15,000 does not happen overnight. We are currently working in partnership with another group on bringing a new event to Yarmouth in mid-June, with details to come out soon. If the new event is successful, we hope to make it an annual event with the profit from this new one going toward a rainy day fund in case bad weather happens again. However, before we count our chickens before they hatch, we are in financial need right now in order to pay our bill to the Mariner Center, and this is the reason for our request to both the municipality and the town of Yarmouth. We requested a $5,000 grant from the municipality, and our request to the town is also for $5,000. We are willing to borrow money and accept the responsibility of paying the remainder of the $16,035 bill. We did meet with the municipality of Yarmouth prior to their committee of the whole meeting two weeks ago, but they have yet to finalize their support. Whether this money is dispersed as a one, as a new one-time-only grant, or an advancement on future grants to the Agricultural Society is a decision that each council needs to make. Any financial assistance would be greatly appreciated, and we are open to discussion. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Go ahead.
Just wondering, before you went into this this year, did you have a budget planned?
We did have a budget, yes.
And the other question was going to be about why you were up so much on entertainment, but I guess you already answered that one, so thank you.
Yeah, our main reason was because we moved everything outside. We then essentially, we had an empty main arena, and we didn't feel that we could leave it empty.
Right.
So we had to fill it.
Thanks.
Yeah, that was my question, because I saw the extra. $12,000, $10,000? Twelve. Good, any more questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Sandy, can you turn here? Oh. Okay, we are back up to number five. Council priorities. CAO, go ahead.
Your Worship, I circulated a brief report, just kind of providing a general update on the council priorities. Is there for your information? Any questions?
Any questions for the CAO on the priorities? Staff report, CAO report. Go ahead, CAO.
Thank you. At the risk of sounding like a broken record, there is a report that I provided. It is based on the motions of council, circulated for your information, and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to, happy to respond now or at a later date.
Fire department report. I did have that one. Chief, certainly. Go ahead, Counselor Mooney.
I noticed, Chief, you have some staging out at the fire hall. What's going on? Are you doing some repairs? What's the story?
Yeah, they're doing the siding in the windows on the building right now. Hopefully, that's going to be done sometime in December.
What was it, siding in windows?
Siding in windows, yeah.
How many windows?
I don't know, I'd have to go count, but they're doing most of them on the building.
Okay, good.
Any more questions for the chief? Thank you, chief. That was easy.
I think so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just have one question on the motor vehicle accidents. Is that quite high? 106 for the year?
Not really, no, it's not really high at all.
Okay.
And that data also, depending upon what happens during the winter months and stuff, sometimes we have a bad winter, sometimes we have a good winter. Always the first snow, you always have most of your accidents and everything.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Thanks, chief. Planning department. Welcome, Caroline.
So the planning department report was sent out to you before the meeting. You'll notice it's a little bit different format than you've received in the past. We're just trying something new. We want to, we want to try and communicate more effectively with the public and councils. That's why it looks different, and I'd love to hear your feedback on it.
Good. Counselor Langill?
Thank you, your worship. I looked at the planning report, and I do want to congratulate our planner. Been around this table for probably too long, in some people's eyes, anyway. But this is amazing. This is an absolutely amazing report. This is probably the first planner's report I've seen that makes sense. It's a really visually good to see. But I do want to comment that it's amazing that, you know, it's always good to have somebody new. When I look at that checklist you developed, that was really impressive, and that's something that we should have had 30 years ago. So congratulations on you and your staff for doing an excellent job on that. It's nice to see us entering the 21st century.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else, questions for the planner, comments? Thank you. Great job. Operational Services Department. It's not here. Sorry. Go ahead, because I have a couple of questions.
Dave, unfortunately, he wasn't able to be with us this afternoon. I did get a message from him over lunchtime. He's onsite at a infrastructure project, and he couldn't avoid that.
Okay. All right. So do you know where we are with regard to our Gyl Street? We're going to have a report very soon?
Yeah, nothing has changed that I'm aware of there. We were expecting a report the end of this month, early next month, and when it comes in, it will be presented at a public meeting to council, and obviously, anybody wishes to be in attendance, maybe.
Good.
This probably got more to do with the financial issue than with Dave, and I know Counselor Langill brought it up here the last meeting about paving of the Green Street and going back to do some rework and looking at that. Do you think that will be done, the whole project will be done before snow flies?
CAO?
The intention is to have first, the first lift of asphalt on this, this fall, and the second lift will go on in the spring. So everything will be closed up, paved, but there'll be another lift of asphalt added in the spring.
Okay.
And I spoke to the engineer yesterday about that.
Okay. Good.
Good. Finance.
No report.
No report doesn't mean no money, right?
Doesn't mean.
Okay. Any questions for the financial officer? Okay. Yarmouth Recreation. Do we receive a report? Economic Development. Welcome, Natalie.
Hello, everybody. I apologize.
Right into the, I just can't hear today, I don't know what's going on.
Sorry.
That's okay.
As part of my report, I wanted to do a progress update on the brand identity. And Akis Tixx Reform Media, Ian is going to be joining us, he's on his way. So in preparation of that, as you review the rest of my report, I'd like to hand this out. I wasn't expecting that the rest of the other people with the staff reports would go quite that quickly. Are there any questions with regards to the balance of my update this month?
I do. The, under your, your focus there, and we're looking, I'm looking at the bottom, our investment readiness. Are we going to tap into McSweeney? It just says no work contracted. Is that something we need to do or move forward with? Where are we on that?
Currently, right now, the REN is issuing a tender with regards to doing the strategic plan. McSweeney will be one of the companies I'm sure that will be replying to that. What we have so far is some intelligence from a report that has been done by McSweeney that's come through NSBI. So we're using some of that just to gain some understanding in the direction of what they will be doing. As of yesterday, we got a quote from McSweeney with regards to doing our community profile. I forwarded that to the CAO. We're going to be reviewing that with the REN and NSBI to see where we can have some economies of scale, and what we can do in advance, or what we have to wait until the strategic plan is done.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for, so Ian's coming in?
Ian from Foreign Media should be here in the next 10 minutes, so if you'd like to...
Okay. If there's, if, okay, go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, your worship. Just in your report, under Focus, Program Management of the Downtown Blueprint, Identity and Branding, Project Completion, Q1 Accent, 2015, does that mean quarter one?
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's what it means?
Yes, the first quarter.
Yeah, I've never seen that before, so I was curious, new language.
Okay, so if everybody is in agreement, when Ian comes in, we'll finish up whatever we're doing, and then Natalie, you can introduce him, and he can, he's just going to speak to the branding piece?
Correct.
Okay, is everyone okay with that? All right, thanks, Natalie.
I have a question, your worship.
Yep, go ahead.
And I know Counselor Langill brought it up, and I went for my walk at quarter after seven this morning, almost got whacked by some branding from Yarmouth this morning. One of those banners came off and... One of those banners came off and kind of almost got me. I was walking down by the horses. What's the story? I thought we were going to be taking those off. Is that, I know, but probably most of them are off now anyways, but...
Yeah, it was a matter of resources. I reminded the park staff that they need to come off a couple of weeks ago, and it's just been a matter of resources knocking them down, and obviously, the wind has done its job.
There's one down, yeah.
The wind has done its job.
Okay, good.
Okay. Corporal Gosling, did you need to share anything? You're good? All right, that's all the reports. Business, request for decision, MPS to RFP review committee. CAO, did you want to do that? Or Caroline? If you wouldn't mind, thank you.
So, I issued a request for proposals for our MPS review, our municipal planning strategy review. And as part of that process, I thought it would be helpful if we formed a committee to choose the best candidate. I've spoken to a number of consultant companies, so I think we're going to get quite a few responses.
Excellent.
So, I am just looking to get a motion from council that we form a committee to review the proposals received. I've made some recommendations on who I thought could or should sit on that committee, but I'm open to suggestions from council as well.
Counselor McCaskey?
Thank you, to the CAO or yourself. Has this been costed out? Is there a number there, what this is going to cost?
For the MPS review?
For the consultants.
Yes.
You mentioned consultant?
Yes.
So, has there been any, is there a figure we have, Jeff, for consultants for this? I didn't realize there was going to be consultants in this.
Yeah, that's part of the process, is they'll submit their proposal and their price along with their proposal. So, we don't know exactly what that number will be.
Is there a ballpark figure out there where people have done this before? Municipal units have done this before, do you know? Or is that just...
It can range depending on how you approach it, how much consultation you put on the consultants to do and how much...
I guess we want to do it, we want to do it right.
You want to do it right, but we do have the planner within the department who can assist with that process as well. So, it'll, I would say the price will hinge on to what degree they choose to use, Caroline, to what degree they recommend the public consultation through their process. So, it isn't a matter of you're buying a truck and you spec it out. A lot of it is in the art of the consultation and in the expertise they bring in the service. So, we don't know what the range will be until the proposals come in.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Langill?
Thank you, your worship. I noticed in this document, reference was made, quote, "The last official municipal plan review for the town of Yarmouth was performed internally and was completed July 2007," end quote. Is it possible to get a copy of that? I wasn't aware that we did a, that was before my recent tenure. I'd like to see a copy of that, please.
So, the result of the plan review is the plan itself. It is the municipal plan, strategy, and land use bylaw that was adopted in its entirety. That is the result of the review process. So, there is not a separate, there's no separate report.
Go ahead.
So, just to clarify, so that was basically something that was done by the PAC or an internal staff? Is that what it was done?
Yeah, so, under legislation, and I'll let Caroline correct me if I'm wrong here, but every eight years, under law, municipalities are required to review their municipal plan, strategy, and land use bylaw. It is quite an undertaking, and I believe the last eight-year review took about fifteen years to complete. Okay, so, it is quite an undertaking on top of the regular work of the planning department, and so, that is the reason we're engaging an outside consultant to expedite it.
Good. Any more questions? So, we're looking for a motion to form a committee to review, receive proposals and to recommend the superior application to council.
I will make that motion.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Questions being called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Thank you. Seagulls?
Seagulls, thank you, your worship.
Oh, sorry, counselor.
I had a concern from the citizens, so under that concern came a motion that the town of Yarmouth investigate with appropriate government authorities the overpopulation of seagulls in the downtown sections of Yarmouth, and what measures can be taken to alleviate the problem?
Okay, so, that's under, that's under our minister's... Yeah, it is. Okay? I think it is. He wants protection. Okay, so, they are, I know, they are all protected. Go ahead.
They're protected, as in terminating them, but they're not protected as in moving them or discouraging them or otherwise, and I think the counselor's motion deserves something, you know, with all due respect. You know, really, I mean, it is a concern. I do know along Main Street here in the summer, especially in front of, I think, Jim, you know what I'm talking about, by City Drug, it gets pretty gnarly there sometimes, and especially where with the old TD, where the TD building is, it's get a little rugged. And then, you also look at the top of some of the buildings, they're getting pretty severe, so... Yes, exactly. It's an issue, and I don't think we should dismiss it. I think this could be, we should be, it's like our deer situation, is there something we can do proactively? So, I'm hoping the council would move it, so at least we can look at it and maybe refer it to natural resources. We do have our local minister, who is the Minister of Natural Resources, and seagulls, which our engineer refers to as flying rats, basically, you know, they're a natural resource, so maybe we should do something. I think we should do something about it.
So, that's his motion. We weren't being, no, we weren't, no, that's his motion. We weren't dismissing it. We were just saying we're fortunate enough to have the Natural Resources Minister here. They are protected, as in you can't... Exactly. Thank you. Can't whack them, but there are other ways to go. So, he just needs a second or two, his motion. Okay? Now, we're good to discuss. Go ahead, counselor.
Thank you, your worship. Just to, well, if they're not discouraged by the music on Main Street, I don't know what's going to get on them. But nevertheless, at BIO, they have a sort of a BIO, Pervert Institute Oceanography in Dartmouth. They have on the ships, the new patrol ships that are out now, they have a high-pitched sound on them because they were attracting a lot of the birds there, so that might be something, just so you'll know that there are devices out there that you can put on top of buildings, and they have them on top of their buildings. It's a high-pitched sound that the seagulls and I don't like, birds don't like, and they stay away from the buildings. So, that might be something to bring up to the minister, Counselor Mooney.
Good. Deputy?
If you look at the rooftop of the Acadian Glass Building, a couple of years, several years ago, I organized with the help of a contractor of wire leading along the edge, the peak of the roof, and around all the whole peak, and it has reduced the seagulls. I think they just moved more or less across the street, though. But anyway, there are some interesting ideas out there.
But we can't be alone, so they probably have something there that, right? We just have to ask. Yeah, exactly. Did you want to...
Well, further to Jim, the solution, it seems, this old solution, you go look to the good old days, are the barge boards. If you look at my place, you'll notice that there's that little funny board that runs around the top. To a seagull or to a pigeon, that looks like a snake, and hence, they don't light on the building. That was the old, that's why a lot of those old houses had that decorative trim with the swirl and the big eyeball on either ends, because to them, their visual spectrum, it looks like a snake. So, you just simply slap one of them up on some of those buildings, and you shouldn't have any seagulls or pigeons or any bird lady.
Go ahead, Counselor Doss.
Thank you, your worship. What do you charge an hour?
Not enough for this, right, Greg?
Yeah, Counselor Langill, you're absolutely right. The old houses, they did have the scallops there because the seagulls took them as snakes. In the cities, they have where you cannot retrain humans to stop feeding them Kentucky Fried Chicken or the rest of the french fries, because twenty years ago, our seagulls were much better behaved than they are today. Also, the, I don't know what they're called, it has a special name. It looks as though there are just inverted nails all sticking up. Seagulls stay away from those, as do pigeons. And also chili peppers. I put, ever since a neighbor two doors down from us, ever since they cleaned their, not cleaned up, but fixed their soffits, their seagulls migrated over to our house, and they love one particular side of our eaves trough. And we just put chili peppers in there, and they don't come by anymore. There are a number of different ways to go about it. Thank you.
Good. Okay, so, there's a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Questions being called. All those in favor? Contrary, motion carried. Meetings agenda, I just put it on there just as a reminder, because we just, not always, sometimes get a lot of things added, and even just a couple of lines saying what we're after, so if anybody wants to look into it or research or anything, it's much easier. Go ahead, counselor.
Thank you, your worship. This is an interesting, I'm glad you put this on the agenda, because it kind of raises an issue. We have a council committee meetings agenda policy. We also have a council meeting bylaw. Question to the solicitor, which one supersedes the other?
Did you get your cookie today?
Yeah.
Okay, you're on.
Well, I'm not sure if there's any inconsistency between the bylaw and the policy. I guess if there was, the bylaw would take precedent, but they both could address the same type of area or the same issues.
Go ahead.
Well, as they say in law, you never ask a question you don't know the answer to. So, here's an example, your worship, of some conflict, because in our meeting policy, it's very clear that nothing can go on the agenda unless a motion is present. That is in the meeting policy. So, that would include items that were on today for discussion and items that were added at this meeting. Technically, we're violating the meeting policy. However, if you look at the meeting bylaw, it's a may require motion or not. So, I'm a little confused. That's why I voted nay for the agenda, because we're into consistency here, and this is why I'm thinking, well, if we're following the bylaw, which is law, nothing should be on this agenda without being preceded by a motion, which, by the way, has to be signed by the mover and seconder before it comes to this table. So, we can't even go according to the meeting bylaw, which is the document we go with. So, discussion items, for example, today, we have an item coming up. I have no idea what it's about. Technically, we should not be discussing that, according to the bylaw. Some of the items we discussed today, we should not be discussing without a motion signed by the mover and seconder, according to the bylaw. Which brings me to the point that maybe we should look at the bylaw, you know, as a thought, because if we're going to be consistent, you know, because I had some items that I had hoped to put on the agenda today, which didn't make it because I did not have a motion. And some of them didn't have motion because they're for discussion purposes, which is very difficult to put an item on the agenda if you don't know what the motion's going to be, but you feel it's a discussion item. But the meeting bylaw does not allow discussion at the meeting. It simply states that you must have a motion according to the policy. So, I'm just curious as to what direction we should be taking here, and let's be consistent, you know, and I don't care one way or the other. I just, if you have a bylaw, you have a policy, but I'm having a little difficulty between the two, and I'm just hoping for some clarification and some direction.
Either one of you? Because I just, from my standpoint in this seat, I just don't, when we add things at the last minute and we have motions with them and they get passed, that second sober thought, or that it's just even for me, if we go back and revisit it, which would be my, which would be what I would like to see done, to take both of them and make sure that they are consistent, first of all, and secondly, maybe add something in there that if, we have to have things that we can discuss. You know, that's the purpose of this, to get things on the table and have some good discussion and make some decisions. But before the discussion, if we know at least a couple of days ahead of time, which is why the Tuesday before, the Friday before, that we have an inkling of what's going to be coming up, so we can do some research, look into it, ask questions of various staff, whatever we have to do. If you listen to, just at our recent UNSM meeting, Bernie White, who's the registered parliamentarian, I went to his, I've been to two or three of his sessions, and Ellie Mina said the same thing, like adding the, they call them green bananas, the last-minute things, and sometimes you make decisions that your story you made or you wish you could reverse. So, for me, it's really as simple as can we, a couple of days ahead of time, get a motion, number one, for what's on the agenda? And number two, if it's simply for discussion, maybe a couple of lines just to say this is what we're going to look at, and it just makes everybody more comfortable to go ahead and find out more information. Is that possible? You're on.
Yeah, I mean, I haven't reviewed them closely. I could certainly review them both and determine where there are some inconsistencies, and then bring that back to council, and then you can determine which way you want to go so that the policy and the bylaws align, which, you're right, they should align. There shouldn't be any inconsistencies between the two, so I could certainly do that. It's not a problem.
Okay. Go ahead, one more.
Because if you look at the meeting bylaw, it basically has the same things as the meeting policy, except that the meeting bylaw, I don't believe, has been reviewed. In fact, very few of the bylaws have been reviewed, which brings me to another sore point. We really should be doing something on that, and this is one. To me, I think you should have one or the other. I don't think you should have a bylaw and a policy. I don't understand the rationale, because both the bylaw and the policy deal with agenda. Both bylaw and policy deal with structure. Both bylaw, I mean, they basically are covering the same material. The other night, being somewhat insomniac, and one way to put myself to sleep is to look at the list of town bylaws. We've got one heck of a pile of bylaws out there, and we started a process two years ago to review them. Unfortunately, I got bogged down because it was going too slow. I thought it was going at a good pace, myself, because it is a lot of work to put bylaws together. As Counselor Mooney and McCaskey will attest, we just finished working on the bylaws for the Meadows, and I just finished with Argyle Home Support, and now, we're starting on Harborside. It takes six months to actually put the process together, but we had hoped to look at the bylaws of the town, and here's a prime example of conflict happening, and there's a few other things happening in there as well. So, that's why I was just throwing it on the table. So, I'd just like to know upfront, what are we expecting? I mean, some municipal governments expect a motion with the whereas is thrown in. Remember playing that game? We can do that if we want. Are we permitted to bring discussion items before the table? Because I'm hearing that we can, so we don't need a motion, but that's contrary to the bylaw. It's just, I don't want to be a stickler here, but we have some inconsistency, and I think we need direction from the chair as to what exactly is needed, when is it needed, and how is it needed to get on agenda of a meeting?
Okay. So, do I need a motion? Can I have a motion to? Go ahead. Well, I was just going to say, can I have a motion to...
Yes, I was going to ask.
Sit with the solicitor and...
You require a motion.
Put those together.
To direct the solicitor to look into those, those two, the two inconsistencies, and once we receive those, then we can sit down and go further.
Go ahead, CAO.
So, I would make that motion.
Okay. Oh, sorry. We have a second? Moved and seconded? Any more discussion? Questions being called. All those in favor? Contrary, motion carried. Fire pits. Oh, this will be popular. Well, I put it on there because I get, it's not one or two calls, it's quite a number of them, and basically... And basically, the discussion or the question to me is, and maybe some of you've gotten this as well, that people can't enjoy their own backyards. They want to be able to have fires. Some of them have said, you know, maybe the bylaw with the mesh over it, whatever the situation is. So I said I'd bring it up because, there it is. Councillor Langley, you're on.
Well, first of all, I know we haven't got on the floor, but I'm just reading the document, I did read it the other night. To me, this should be a motion of reconsideration because councillors already discussed this, council already made a decision on it. We had public hearings, we had all the bells and whistles on this thing, that we've gone through this already. So if we are going to be looking at it, I think on the point of order, if this is the motion today, it should be a notice of motion of reconsideration as per the meeting bylaw of the town. You have to give 30 days' notice to do a reconsideration.
Thank you. He's just looking at the dates.
Well, I don't know, do you have them or do I have to get them from, when was that motion made? That was a while ago, wasn't it?
I thought it was, I put it because I thought it was a year. Been at least a year, yes.
Thank you, your worship. The outgoing fire chief, Ken Kelly, Chief Kelly, was asked about that. He gave a talk on it. It was brought up to council and it was the status quo. We recommended to keep the status quo, which wouldn't allow you to have open pit burning of woods or any other stuff. There are, there are devices out there. Matter of fact, I bought one this summer. And it's a propane device, which is cleaner, it's neater, it's safer. And they're out there on the market, they're not expensive. I think I paid $55 for mine. It's cheaper than building a permit and causing an inconvenience for people with breathing problems and that. And I think that's the only reason why this bylaw came into place. It's for other people that are not appreciative of smoke that's coming all year round in their windows and stuff that have breathing problems. So, I think it's a good bylaw. I don't think we should revisit it and I'll be voting no on the reconsideration, so.
You still looking?
Yeah.
Go ahead, councillor Dennis.
I'm not in favor of it either. I think in a community, all people should be able to breathe clean, smoke-free air in their own homes and in their own backyards. And I think a bylaw should ensure the right, rather than permitting a recreational activity that produces harmful air pollution. And like councillor Mackay's said, nowadays you can buy clean burning. Most people want it because they can see the flames, so now you can have an alternative, like a gas fire pit, that, instead of a wood fire pit.
Good, thank you. Councillor Langley, you're-
And I'm going to throw myself into this mess too. The, that whole issue, one of the biggest concerns we had ironically was during our 250th, councillor Mooney will remember this well. We had a reenactment behind the library where they fired up a blacksmith forge and almost terminated two of our seniors on Grand Street as a result of it. So, definitely, I mean, there's nothing I enjoy better than open fire myself. But on the other hand, councillor Mackay's is dead on. I've been researching these beautiful propane units, they're all over Halifax now. You can go along Argyle Streets, Brink Garden Road and the nice warm heat coming out of them, they look good. So, they burn clean, may not be, to me, it's a better carbon footprint. Maybe I'm wrong on this one, I'll have trepa all over me, but I definitely would not support going revisiting this. I think if people want to build a nice fire with all kinds of nice wood and nice smoke coming out of it, we've got some lovely areas that they can go and I can give them names of good realtors who will sell them some nice cottages.
Good. What's the deal? I don't want to do it wrong.
No, the year applies. For a motion of reconsideration, it can have, it's not just limited to one year or more. It's if a motion for reconsideration has been made and decided, you can't make another motion for reconsideration within a year unless it's by unanimous consent. So, if a motion's already been passed, and I don't know what the motion was made when, it was a year and a half ago, you would have to make a notice of reconsideration at any time. So if it was five years ago, you'd still have to give a notice of reconsideration-
Oh, I was looking at the year, yeah.
For the next meeting, if it's the same motion.
Okay, so we can't vote on this? All right.
Yeah, and just for the, and then you'd need the actual motion that was made, whenever it was made, so it could be reconsidered, right? So, I mean, it might not be exactly the same motion.
Okay. Nope, that's good. Okay, thank you. Citizen Appointment Process Policy. Councillor Mackay's, go ahead.
This, you're, I'll wait to hear from you first, go ahead.
Oh, for the Citizen Appointment Process. Only because, unless I'm wrong, the gentleman that we were appointing to the Mariners Centre Management Board was not from the town.
Yes.
And our, our policy says that he should be, or that he's supposed to be, so did you want to-
Yeah, and I will speak to that, your worship, thank you. You know, we don't, the townspeople, the citizens, the taxpayers, don't get many opportunities, a lot of opportunities. We have, we have boards to sit on, but this is, this is an opportunity for a taxpayer from the town of Yarmouth to sit on. Rather than the people that applied were people from the municipality. We have few boards, this is a very important board, it's like all the other boards are. But this one here, you know, it's the Mariners Centre Board. It's a good board to sit on and we ought to have on the town, town boards, town people, taxpayers. So, to change anything, I thought you were looking at perhaps changing this for, for somebody from out of town. I was hoping you wouldn't be, but, and you're not.
I'm not, no, I just wanted, I wanted it to be in front of us because we need to-
Yeah, we do.
It just opens up a whole-
Yeah, well, it's just that, there must be some people out there that are interested in it. Perhaps if we advertise it maybe on the radio and the local newspaper, perhaps, and just put it out there on our website. Maybe it's a different way we have to get it out to the media that there is an opening for this because I'm sure there's people out there that want to sit on this board, people from the town of Yarmouth. And I would really not want to see it go any other way, so that was my concern and I thought I'd just speak on it.
I, I agree. Did you, do you know how we handle this, to be already appointed?
Yeah, if you've made, passed the motion, it should be reconsidered, yeah.
Okay.
At the next council meeting, yeah. Notice has to be given at the next council meeting.
All right. Go ahead, town, oh, sorry, one of you. Okay, go ahead.
So, at the last council meeting, you had passed a motion around an appointment that actually, as it turns out, was contrary to our policy. So that needs to be reversed before we can actually make an appointment of somebody who fits within the policy.
Does that count all?
Yes.
So, you know, the motion should be-
At the council meeting, someone will have to propose a notice of motion.
Okay. We good then? All right. Did you have anything to share? Go ahead.
Your worship, and with respect to councillor Danny, I supported the, as we all did, the nomination of that person because I thought he brought, would bring to the Mariners Board a wealth of experience when it comes to hockey and hockey-related activities. And many of us live in the municipality and work within the town of Yarmouth. So I don't view in this case, I think they're one in the same when it comes to the operation of our Mariners Board Management. Thank you.
Thank you, deputy. Okay, we are at Correspondence for Action, Municipality of Digby, Highway 101 Task Force. So, they're looking for someone to join that committee. And they will let us know of a date. CAO?
Your worship, this is in response to our inquiry as to whether or not we could have a representative on the committee and they've agreed that we can, so it's a matter of now of appointing someone.
All right. What's that? Well, I think that's what, yeah. Yeah, I'm just, it didn't say, yeah, it just said representative from the town of Yarmouth Council and also extend an invitation to, as a, for a staff member as well, so. Whoops, sorry. Councillor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. Would a staff member, would staff not qualify to sit on this as well?
They, they just, they asked for one of each.
Oh, one of each. Oh, all right, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I should put my glasses back on. The reason I'm asking is, it was made, it's made abundantly, abundantly clear, many times over, that we all sit on boards and committees and sometimes it's just too, too many. In fact, very early on, during our initial, very first council meeting, that specific point was belabored and brought to our attention. And we voted, we voted to remove a number of committees and boards for councillors to sit on. So I'm surprised at this.
Thank you, your worship. If it's okay with councillor Mooney, I would suggest I'd ask councillor Mooney if he would be interested in sitting on that committee. I think he'd be a good candidate for that, with his background, his father being the minister of highways and all at one time.
Yeah. Oh, help us. There's your qualifications. Go ahead, councillor.
Yeah, and if, we have a seconder, councillor Langley? I'll speak to it. I think they're actually looking for some political people along with staff members. I don't think they're going to be meeting that often. They just had a very good announcement by the premier and the minister of Infrastructure Renewal, Mr. McClellan, on some work that's going to be done between Digby and Waymouth. So, I sat on the other one where we got the work done in Port Mattoon and I'll be happy to sit on it. They're not going to meet that often, but I think it's imperative for somebody from Yarmouth representing us because anytime you, you can get good services, people back and forth between Halifax and here quicker, it's good for us. It's good for business, it's good for tourism, it's good for the community, it's good for, you know, people with going to Kentville or Halifax for health reasons or appointments. So, we'll be, I'll be proud to sit on it and bring our concerns to the table and hopefully I'll get that thing done right to Yarmouth and we'll be all set.
Had a good chat with Mr. McClellan the other night too, yeah, he's good to work with, very good to work with. Okay, so councillor Mackay's, you're going to make that a motion for councillor Mooney? Can I have a seconder, please? Oh, did you already second that? We already, sorry about that. Okay, question's been called, all those in favor, all right, contrary, motion, whoops, motion carried. Ian, welcome.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
By way of introduction, my name is Ian MacLeod. The company I represent is Form Media. Earlier this year, we were contracted to consult with the town with the idea of building a brand identity. And what I'm here today to do is essentially update you on some concepts that have been created out of consultation with the community. So back in August, we had the pleasure of visiting here to hold a workshop, which I recognized some faces that attended. And we followed up on that workshop with an online survey where we asked people for their opinions and ideas and their plans for the community. So I have here a document, which I believe you have copies for, and I'm going to walk you through it and essentially explain some very rough approaches that have come out of the consultation with the community. And these approaches, I trust, will be the foundation of a final identity for the community. Now, allow me to explain my approach before I dive too deeply into this, and that is, what the heck are we doing here? We're building an identity, what does that mean? Essentially, an identity is about building on the strength of a community. Take what the community does best, amplify it and share it with the world. That's really, in a nutshell, what we're doing and I've summarized my approach here on the front page of this document. So at your leisure and pleasure, please feel free to consult it. So what are you most proud of? What do you want to be known for? What do you do best? We ask a variety of questions in that genre to ask people what they would like their community to be known for. And we got some very interesting responses out of the workshop and the survey. The vast majority of people who attended the workshop and participated in the survey highlighted Yarmouth's ability to host events. And I was quite struck by that. I was waiting for a tangible, something I could hold in my hand, but I, Yarmouth talked about at length their ability to be great hosts, great organizers of events, and are very proud of that. And fully 12 of the 13 people who attended our workshop highlighted that point. And that really struck home with me and has stayed with me through the preparation of the concepts I'm about to share with you right now. So, and that was echoed in the survey. 50% of the respondents said events, hosting, welcoming are what Yarmouth does best. The remainder said friendliness, scenery and seafood and everything. So, there you go. And so that got us thinking, you know, where does that come from? What's the inspiration for that? And my interpretation is that hosting speaks to hospitality and Nova Scotia hospitality is known the world over. The people of Yarmouth have simply defined it further by taking the spirit of welcome and making it into vocation. You're the hub, you're where people come to, and you provide services, socializing, it's all here, shopping, and it's been going on for generations. You've made it an art form, that's what you do, and you're doing it very well. So the ideas I'm about to show you are reflecting on those sentiments. So let me take you through a concept we call hub of hospitality. This particular idea as an identity is simply a recognition of what I've just shared with you. Yarmouth proudly serves as the hub of services, shopping and socializing from Shelbourne to Digby. You've enjoyed this reputation for centuries and it's allowed you to refine and define the concept of hosting and hospitality. If you'll turn the page, we have some very initial concepts visually to share with you. So, within the word Yarmouth, we've got something that speaks to the shipbuilding past. The Y that cuts through that speaks to, obviously, Yarmouth. But as my partner here has mentioned, it also speaks to the concept of intersection of cultures as well, which is very important to the town. So we've got a couple of variations of this idea in front of you. If you'll turn the page, I've put it into an application. How do you use these ideas? So throughout this presentation, I'm going to take some very rough ideas and put them into an application. In this case, we're putting it into an advertisement. So imagine this in the Doers and Dreamers Guide, some other publication that's speaking to tourism. We've got a festival in full force with the headline, "Put on your party face." It's all happening in Yarmouth, home to a wide array of amazing festivals and events. Check out our website, Yarmouth, Hub of Hospitality. So rightly and proudly, you get to own the concept of hub of hospitality right there in everything else you do. You can imagine this on signage, you can imagine it as a pin on a lapel, hats, t-shirts. The idea is you build the brand of the town through the message inherent in this idea. And I'm prattling away here, hopefully cognizant of any questions that come up. But if anyone's got anything to offer or share, please feel free to ask as I go. So there we have hub of hospitality as a suggested identity. If you'll turn the page, I'm going to take you through a variation on that look and feel.
We have a question, Ian, if that's okay?
Oh, yes, your worship.
Go ahead, councillor.
Just looking at that slogan, the hub of hospitality.
Just looking at that slogan, the hub of hospitality, you being obviously in this business way longer than anyone around. Truro was also a hub. They brand themselves the hub, the hub of, so is that not a little awkward to have two hubs in one province?
I think Truro tries to position itself as an industrial hub or a commercial hub, not one that's based on hospitality. Truro, by virtue of the fact that there are two intersecting highways, has really sort of tried to position itself as a, as a service, industrial, commercial hub, not necessarily as one that's focused on hospitality. That's certainly not the impression I get from Truro when I go through it. It's purely a functional term to describe what it has to offer to people traveling through. I think this is a little more, this is a little more developed, if you will, and it speaks to, I think, a completely different culture of, of hub. That's, in the, in the process of creating this, that Truro has never entered, into my mind as a confusing element here. If it was just hub, I might agree with you, councillor, but I have a feeling we're trying to expand this idea to make it a little more defined. So hospitality is an integral part of the name as much as hub.
Is that, sorry?
So I'm coming in from Sleepy Hollow, Iowa, into Nova Scotia. I come through Amherst and I hit Truro, the hub of whatever, and then I'm going to be coming to Yarmouth another. I'm just thinking it's like having two lobster capitals in Nova Scotia. It's like having two scallop days in Nova Scotia. I'm just thinking of confusion. That's the only thing I'm thinking. And, and that's all. I mean, I, I don't get me wrong. I don't want to be critical. I'm just, I'm just.
I appreciate that.
You know, I don't mean to debate it. I don't, I don't, my place to do that, so I just.
I would encourage you to. So I think these ideas need to be challenged and recharged, so I, I'm very happy to have that discussion. The hub concept is something that I haven't appropriated. It's something you've always had. You've always had that reputation as the hub of hospitality, and this is a recognition of that fact. It's something you've done for, I would say, centuries, and this is now putting it on paper. It's not, in my mind, something that hasn't happened before. There's a legacy for this idea, and this is a recognition of it.
Good.
Okay. So I, I did a circular version because I think as you go out inside, out of the community, this could potentially become a pin. It could be some kind of promotional stuff that you could share with others. We like the roundness idea. It has a lot of legs. Up next, if you will, is a concept we're calling Anchored in Pride. And there's a little bit of legacy to our relationship with the town of Yarmouth. Back in 2010, if I'm not mistaken, we were involved in a, a master plan. And this particular concept was flowed into the presentation, and we're simply bringing it back by popular demand. So if you'll turn the page, you'll see some visual ideas interpreting, interpreting anchor. And it, to me, anchor speaks to strength, which can be applied to practically anything you set your sights on within the town, from building tourism to building business. Anchor speaks to permanence, reliability. So visually, it's got a very strong legacy with the community, and it's quite charming, that's simply put. And if you'll just turn the page, we've interpreted that. So imagine heading down the street and seeing these on lamp posts, seeing them as banners on the street, on, on the sides of buildings. There is a very nice interpretation, very tasteful interpretation of the concept of anchored in pride. Okay? Any questions? The next one is going to come out of left field a bit, but it came out as a result of the consultation and a conversation I had during the actual workshop. There was one gentleman in particular who talked with immense pride about the ability to lure events, major events, that would otherwise have gone to larger communities, notably, I believe, hockey tournaments. And he, there was a confidence, just a supreme confidence in his ability to talk about their, their way, their ability to, to take something that may not have belonged to, to Yarmouth and, and made it their own. And I like that. I just love that attitude, that ability to fight above your weight level and go in there with a little bit of gusto and say, this, this is ours. So I think this identity can speak to events, activities in the tourism world, but it can also speak, I believe, for Yarmouth in so many other capacities. So if you will, just have a quick turn of the page. And again, this is rough. So don't judge it necessarily by the design, but perhaps by the message inherent within it. Small Town, Big Heart. That's my initial design of this. It's got a bit of a retro feel to it. And then we carry it over on the next page, if you will, to what I think is the best way to put Yarmouth to the world, the little, the little town that could. And that's, imagine that as part of a, a pitch to bring in the next major hockey tournament or luring business to the community. So visually, we're saying something quite dramatic here, but we're also saying we're a Cinderella story, the little town with a lot of heart. In the past few years, we competed with the big boys and won the right to host a wide roster of events, and they've all been great successes. It's what we do, surprise people and delight them. Whatever it takes for your next event, check out the Small Town with a Big Heart, Yarmouth. Guess you can see where I'm going with that, fairly straightforward. Well.
I, I love this one. I did the, the small, the, it's the low, the Small Town, Big Heart, just sound so fluffy, but when you put that, that's exactly.
Yeah, absolutely. And the applications are as important as the identity at this point, because when you see them on their page by themselves, it's hard to imagine what you can do with them. So we've taken it that little extra step further to apply it to something. This is what we have in mind when we see it working for you. So there's other ideas that goes with this, but I think this is probably a very eloquent description of what we're trying to get at. Okay? This, on the next page, is a concept we're calling Direction Four, On the Edge of Everywhere. Now, this is an idea that is an interpretation of an issue that came up in the survey and in the workshop and in conversations with people outside our consult. Location is obviously a very crucial consideration in the world of tourism and business. And Yarmouth has perhaps been perceived as out of the way, but really, the reality could be quite different. Yarmouth is quite literally on the edge of Canada for American tourists coming here, on the edge of the US for Nova Scotians looking to go to the US, and for business wanting to be in proximity to the New England market. So being on the edge has its own special offering. Very recently, I believe, Yarmouth and Acadian Shores were named North America's first nighttime sky preserve, if I'm not mistaken, which, which is only one of four in the world, if I'm not mistaken.
First one in North America?
So if you'll turn the page, there is a very initial, rough interpretation on the edge of everywhere. We're referencing the night sky. We're also referencing perhaps the Acadian quality as well, the star. Again, this is rough, but I, I'd like in principle where this is going. So why don't we turn the page and then I'll show you, demonstrate in an application where I think this could be used. So right away, in a business application, when you're in recruitment world, place your business on the edge of everywhere with a nice shot of the infinite, of the coastline, with copy that might say, "The possibilities are infinite. Yarmouth, Nova Scotia, glorious gateway to the rest of Canada, just hours from New England and a $25 billion market." If you're looking to give your business the edge, find it in Yarmouth. So the edge of everywhere becomes your platform, your foundation, your stage to, to take your message to the world, if you will. I've applied that also to a tourism-style ad on the next page. Nice dark sky full of stars with the headline, "More Stars Than Hollywood." For your next vacation, why run to the sun when you can head for the stars? In Yarmouth, Nova Scotia, North America's first United Nations-backed nighttime sky preserve. One of only four in the world where the night sky truly comes alive. For a vacation, you'll always remember, come ski, see a sky you'll never forget. So we'll throw the copy in with the idea. It's all yours, but it's a special bonus, one, one-time offer. But I think this also probably indicates my excitement and enthusiasm for the idea. It's possibly not what you're expecting, but I'd like to think there's at least one idea which could do that for you. And that, in a nutshell, is a very condensed and concise, I hope, review of four concepts for your consideration.
Councillor Dennis, or, yeah, councillor Dennis.
I really like Yarmouth Anchored in Pride, but of course, my heart really loves More Stars Than Hollywood because that was one that I was really interested in, mostly because if you look around here, most people have stars on their buildings. They have the Acadian star, flags have the Acadian star. We have Nova star. The fishermen were led by the stars.
Right.
We, something like that you can act on so much, like hairdressers, makeup, can say, "Pimping with the stars." Like you can always have events around stars. Set up, I know there's only one other place, I think it's out in B.C., that actually has events for stargazing. And they set up telescopes in different areas where you can watch the stars. Like, it's just so much like our area. So I think that and the anchor's really good if they were kind of combined somehow.
Right. And, and you may be aware of this, but I thought I should bring it to your attention. I believe Yarmouth and Acadian Shore Tourism is working on an identity, which I trust at some point, there may be some convergence. And they have hinted that the star concept is, is something they'd like to pursue. So there may be some, a nice coincidence in the process here, but I didn't want to prejudice it. I just, I just wanted to let you know that that might be in the offering as well.
Yes, because I know you guys were going to be working together. So I think both concepts are really good.
Right. We've shared our research with the town, with the agency of record for this, for the YASTA project. So we thought that was a nice gesture, a nice way to hopefully ensure there is some convergence. No guarantee, but hopefully it's a step in the right direction.
Yeah, it, it's really important that we're all, all on the same page, because, you know, a visitor doesn't question whether they should look at the branding of a town or, or a region, I guess, you know, in a lot of ways, same page. Councillor Langel?
Thank you, your worship. Branding, to me, is critical. And once you create your brand, you're kind of stuck with your brand, for good or for bad. And you need uniqueness, in my opinion. You need something that stands apart, that's something from everybody else. I did a quick Google search into Small Town, Big Heart, and I found literally thousands of small towns. Everything from City of Darston to Avon to, you, it's unbelievable, the number that are using that slogan. And I will digress. My favorite that they had was, if I can find it, this one particular town, which was absolutely awesome. I just, I, I'm sorry, I giggled a minute during Sandy's presentation because it was so funny. It was this town, it said, "Six thousand and two happy souls and three grouches." On their sign. That was really quite good.
Well, we can get one of those made up.
We can do that. But then when I, I did a Google search for anchored in pride, nobody's using it. And I, I personally, I'm like with, with Sandy, I like the anchored in pride. I see the, the Small Town, Big Heart as something you could do as a promotion, something you could do at, you know, on a limited thing. I know this gym was quite, quite happy with it as something you can do like on an annual or a biannual. But to do the actual oomph kind of a thing, I didn't, you know, you really want something that has the oomph to it. So I'm, I'm, you know, I know, I don't know whether we're supposed to do something with this today, but my 10 cents worth. I like the anchored because that was something that come out of the Akestic study. That was one of the designs that we, we looked at. We looked at numerous ones. And it, it was, it's a seafaring town. The anchor is there. And you know, with all due respect, there's probably no town in Atlantic Canada that has as much pride that we have. And I think we should be heralding that. I mean, we definitely are have a big heart, but we've got a lot of pride, too. We're very proud of our achievements, and I think we should herald it. So I'm, I'm with, with Sandy on that one. The small town, big town, small heart, use it as like a promotion or something for some event, but anchor, anchor what you want to anchor.
Yeah, go, go ahead, councillor.
Yeah, and I, and I like, I like the anchored one just because of our seafaring heritage. The other ones, like you said, they're good, good slogans. The, I like the, the More Stars Than Hollywood, but here we are promoting the town of Yarmouth. Are we doing it as a region? Are we going to do, be doing this as a town, right? So anchored in, anchored in history, anchored in traditions, you know, and we, and we go away. We've been to T-Mac before, and we've, we've done the thing where we're representing the town of Yarmouth. But one of our things, and I know we do it all the time, one of our photos or one of the things that we always use to sell, Yarmouth, the town of Yarmouth, if we use the lighthouse, right? Which is not even situated in the town of Yarmouth, but it's close enough that you can notice it from almost any point in the town. But I like the, I like the anchored in, so, but they're all good.
Yeah, great, great work. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll make just a quick point. Councillor Langel brought something out, which I think is, is worthy of consideration. That is about looking, it's about today, but it's also about tomorrow. What's the legacy or the vision you want to create? The message that you want to be known for in five, six, 10 years' time. So what we're investing here is a thought that hopefully we can carry through to the next generation. So it's not a, it's not a one-off, a five-week campaign. It's, it's a signature that we want to put on everything and, and be known for and take pride in. So I think I would probably invest that kind of thinking into what your next decision's going to be.
Okay, C.A.O.
So Ian, would you, would you talk about next steps, like how you see this going from here?
Sure. Keeping in mind that what I've shared with you is essentially a rough copy, if you will. I'd be grateful for your feedback, for your suggestions, possible revisions, which we will then take back and refine further. We've probably given you, well, there are multiple ideas here, but it would be nice, within the next few weeks, to bring this down to one, possibly two ideas that we can take to the next level. If you're confident and comfortable that there's something here that does it for you, then let's move to the, the finish line here. And then we will, we'll work on refining the idea to the point where you can then apply it to whatever you're interested in. So there's a couple of options. Do you see the opportunity in the next few days or weeks to refine this down to one idea? Or would you like us to dig a little bit further into what we've shared with you today? It's really your choice. And it's also, I believe, your timeline, but within reason, I would think in the next six to eight weeks, we could have your feedback and then apply it to basically polishing these ideas for your use. So I think that's the best way to put it. Jeff, is that fair to say? Is that a reasonable?
Good. Okay. Councillor McCausick, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. You know, I was just, just looking up above here. We have a great, you know, a signature of, of Yarmouth that's been there for a number of years. I'm just thinking, wouldn't anchored, Yarmouth Anchored in Pride, Progress, Yarmouth Anchored in Pride, would that be hard to incorporate or envision something like that on that, on that logo?
Well, it's funny, it's interesting you should say that, councillor, because as I was sitting, waiting to speak.
I mean, that's just everything.
That caught my attention, and it immediately said to me of the, the ideas here that we are sharing and talking about today, that is certainly the most suitable idea to.
It's got everything about the ocean, the sea, seabirds, and it's, it's got it all. It could be just rejigged with this here nice logo.
Right.
And I, I don't know. I, I just thought of that. I think that would be, if it can be done, it would, it would look good.
I appreciate that. My, my only caution is, what do you want to be known for tomorrow? That's what you're known for today. Is it going to go hand in hand? Do you see your community staying loyal to this field, or do you see an opportunity to do something that takes you to another level?
Well, it all depends on how many people know that they even exist, you know? I mean, it probably doesn't. If you were to put that out in the mall and say, if you take the Yarmouth in that off and say, does, do you know that emblem? There'd be a lot that may not. Some may, when they get their tax bill or something that is, that they don't like, or water bill or something like that, they might know or buy that. But other than that, no.
Okay.
No, for me, no.
Fair enough.
See, for, for me, for me, that emblem is so busy, that it would take me a week to memorize everything that's on it. Seriously. I know that sounds, I'm not trying to be rude, but, because it's our emblem. But it's so, it's just so busy. And for And for me, a branding is just bam, there it is.
Absolutely.
Simple and pow, one thing that says it all. We got Counselor Langel? Go ahead.
I think it's important to note that that is the seal of the town, which is different than our brand. I mean, that we would keep forever, that is our seal. I mean, that's what we use and rendered from the mayor's or C.A.O.'s office, so I think we shouldn't confuse the issue. I think the brand is what we're promoting for. I mean, that's a dreadful thing to use as a logo on promotion and advertising, because oftentimes it's so small, you don't even know where it's from. And as the mayor pointed out, it is very busy, whereas your branding piece that you're putting here is going to be boom, you're going to see, and you'll know exactly, that's Yarmouth, Nova Scotia, versus that, which you really have to have fairly large to even know the word Yarmouth is in there, you know? And that's, so you keep your, you keep your seal forever and a day, but the branding that you're talking about, I mean, that may have a lifespan of 10 years, you know what I mean? Maybe 15 years or 20, you don't know. But oftentimes, as you know, as a designer, brands change. I mean, if I had a dollar for every time Coca-Cola changed their logos and brand, I'd be pretty happy. They keep the same Coke, but the colors and the wings and everything changes appropriately with it. I mean, that's to keep in concert with the times, and that's what you're doing, so I think that's great.
Counselor Dennis?
Yes, I just have a question on the Yarmouth Anchored and Pride, only because I'm a girl. This is very masculine-looking, love the anchor and all, but is this the colors that we'll be going with, or will we be able to have?
So, it's a great question, and that's part of the process. We'd be happy to show you some variations in the color. I believe earlier, we've already played with it.
Yeah, orange doesn't work very well here, just saying.
No.
Inside joke, the sort of not inside, but it's okay.
That's all right. I don't want a hot pink one, but, but-
If this is the approach that you're, as a council, interested in us pursuing, we'd be very happy to give you some variations on that.
Yeah, and I was just thinking that if the star part is part of like Yasta's, that maybe working together, if a star was at, like later, could be added to that logo? Or is that going to be like totally separate?
Well, I, I'd be reluctant to put something in front of you that you'd have to adjust in the next year or two. That feels a little reckless on our part.
Right.
I think that decision should be made now, and then committed to, perhaps looked at in a few years' time. I would, I would want to see you start on the right foot by making sure whatever elements you're keen to see are reflected in there right away.
Yeah, like I was just thinking, like one star.
We're going to have, what's going to have to, you're on, no, no, you're on next. What'll have to happen is, we'll either sit down as a council and say, where do we want to go? Because you need, you know, there's a timeline thing as well, and we want to be ready for the spring, I think.
I agree.
Or we send our feedback to Linda. I would rather sit as a group and discuss, because sometimes somebody says something and turns my mind to that, so.
Okay.
What'll happen, Counselor Dawes? Go ahead, I know you had your light on.
Thank you, Your Worship. The impact, the visual impact of colors, absolutely. The branding is louder than you could ever hear.
Right.
And I am also very, very sensitive to and susceptible to color, and I looked at a couple of these, and unfortunately, the color took my attention away, this one especially. I like it, but first thing I thought of was one company, it's a dry cleaning company, the logo and the coloring reminded me of it, as well as another company, but that's irrelevant. I attended, I attended your sessions.
Oh, good.
And I wondered and I asked then if input was, if you were also seeking input from visitors, because we see ourselves as we like to see ourselves.
Yes.
The, we only see what we want to see in the mirror, but our visitors, the strangers that come here and that hopefully keep coming here, they see us as we really are. And yeah, I agree with all of this, but it is, to me, I would like to know what our visitors see us as. What is it that attracts them back here all the time, other than their family cottages that they've had here for a couple of generations?
Let me just reference the color issue. The great news about the color issue is that if we have consensus to on approach here, we will overwhelm you with choices of color, within reason, of course.
Absolutely. I'm very well aware of that. It's just the branding and the coloring, it is just so impressive to me, that's all. I like the anchor, but as soon as I saw it, and I remember it being brought up at one of the meetings, a couple of people said, "Yep, yep, it sounds good, but it still gives, it still has a connotation of weighing down."
The concept of anchor?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah. I liked it, I think it's great, yes, heritage, it's got heritage written all over it, but then again, it's the color.
Okay.
But that's only, that's only my perception.
Well, and it's under respected, so fair to say, if we are heading in that direction, we'll play with the values of those colors and hopefully find some agreement. Your other, your other point is an important one, but it's also potentially risky one.
Ice cream, sorry.
I-
Ice cream, yes, there's an ice cream company that has a very, very similar logo.
Okay.
Yes, sorry.
No, no, no. Occasionally, we come into communities that are, and we ask the question, actually, what do, what do people in the community think other people view, how the, how the people from outside perceive their community? And it's a sensitive issue, because at the end of the day, I think we want to sell the reality of a community as opposed to its perception. So, and there's no more reliable group than the people who live in that community. Okay.
Actually, I agree. Where I was coming from was, we look in the mirror and we see what we want to see, but when we look at a picture, that's when we actually see what truly is there.
Okay.
That's all.
Counselor Langel?
Thank you, Your Worship. The counselor's point on color in that, the 250th, when we did it through, we did a, we had a partnership, as you probably are aware, with NASCAD, and we had a really incredible team work on the logo that we did for the Yarmouth 250th. And one of the more painstaking activities was color, because we have three indigenous communities here that all work together, the Native Mi'kmaq culture, the Acadian culture, and the English culture, and the colors that were selected were for those groups, hence the sale, which I see, I was really pleased to see the branding we did this summer followed that same coloration. What's neat about the anchor logo is you could really put any color background in behind it. I mean, it's the symbol, you know, the color is an immaterial, and I think, I don't know if you've been made aware of what was done with the 250th group and their whole color compositions and that, I think I have a CD kicking around somewhere that has all the stuff on it. I think I, or Town Hall definitely should have one. But you may want to look at that as a thought, because they did a lot of research into those colors they picked, because they wanted it to be indicative of the three feeding communities that we had here, and there was a, I don't know whether you're aware, but both the English and the French settlers that came to Yarmouth in, earlier in the, in the early 1700s, and the English in 1761, both cultures almost died that first winter, had it not been for the native element that was here. And they basically saved the Acadian culture here and the English culture, hence the bond, so it's almost good to have the three. But the benefit of this is you could have that anchor with three different colors down the street if you wanted to, using different coloration. So it's, that's the part of that logo I do like, is because it has that flexibility in design.
Yes. Well, when you start to say flexibility, it sounds like we're in the right ballpark, because I do like the idea of some variation in color, and you've really intrigued me here with the project for the 250. I'd love to see and hear more about it. That sounds like the homework may have been done on the colors.
So, well, yeah, we'll dig those out, and, okay, so the next, the next thing is, go ahead.
What do you think? I mean, I'm hearing a lot of discussion. Can we, dare we broach the question now? Like, what do we think? And let give this poor man some direction, I mean, and he can at least start working on concepts. I mean, we can still stay in our minds, sober second thought if we want, but-
Wait until we get it on council.
Wait until the 12th?
You want to say something there, Gurney?
I just wrote something up here.
You can-
I don't think it works anymore. So, you go on, make a thing, like a corner of the altar, and you have to stay in the shell, and you can't point the altar over there. So, I agree with Mr. Land, I think the altar is not really a good thing. Oh, this is Yarmouth and Pride, and Pride, I tend to approve that, it's a lot of tradition, it's a lot of, for us to take on, working, knowing, bad reputation, and, all the way side, there's a lot of history here. I think simple and simplistic for the anchor, and then like Mr. Land says, we incorporate the French coffee, or whatever, maybe, it doesn't have to be all on color, it's simple for the different nationalities, the French, the English, what surrounds the town, what made the town, I think, some, I think that's our thing, but that's, we're bad on that. You know, the town is going back to the rest of the time, you know, it's just-
We're coming back.
Sign of the times, but I think we're on the right thing here. I think there is a lot of history, there's a lot of tradition, there's a lot of pride in here, it almost has it, and I think that's what's out here.
Thanks, Gurney. Counselor Langel?
And I agree, Your Worship, with your earlier comment. I mean, we want us some time, we don't want to jump into this kind of a thing, it is a branding. Counselor Mackay-Zach and I were just chatting here on the side, listening to Gurney. Wait until our next council meeting, a couple of weeks of sober second thought.
Yeah.
If I can request to put it on the agenda, or at least somebody put it on the agenda. It's one of those items, it's going to be hard to put a motion to, but, except we're going to accept a design for brand, and that'll give Ian a chance to take a look. I think he's got, I think he's got a flavor of what, where we're heading. But on the other hand, in case there is something comes up that's negative, this would be an opportunity. So I'd like to make a motion that this be referred to the December 11th council meeting.
Moved and seconded, is that okay, appropriate there? I mean, not that it's, we just said like maybe the next fiscal one, but it doesn't, doesn't matter. Okay? Any more discussion? Go ahead. What?
We're meeting, we're going to what, make decisions in December?
We should make a decision.
And what are we going to decide on?
What we want in the design.
We're going to take a, take a look at everything that we've been given, and then just make a decision, vote on which way we're going to go at the council meeting. Is that okay? Tori, go ahead. Natalie?
Your Worship, can I suggest that for that meeting, we'll have done the color investigation, and we can provide some color wave choices, so that you can look at those as well?
That'd be a good idea, yeah, that'd be a good idea.
So, very quick, because we want to move on, but we've agreed a couple, that a couple are not in the running.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, and I think the point is, Your Worship, timing is an issue.
It is.
We are looking at our next meeting is December the 11th. We normally don't have committee of the whole in December, normally. Doesn't mean we can't call a special one, I guess. And then realistically, our next council isn't until January, so I really think for, to give justice to this, it's going to take, you just don't whip these things up overnight, and then now on top of that, you're then going to look at promotional items, you're going to look at banners, et cetera. We so often have run into this, where we've dilly-dallyed, and unfortunately, we're behind the eight ball, and we don't have enough time to do this professionally. And I, I don't, one thing I've learned, having a son who's a graphic designer, you don't rush him. You know, you give them that creative time to take that time they need and to tweak and to do the adjustments, because you get a much better product, so.
Yep.
I really think we should, given three, two weeks, Your Worship, there's no reason why we can't make a decision on this. It's not rocket science, we can put a man on the moon, we can surely decide a brand for the town, or at least give Ian here some direction.
Okay, so the motion's on the floor for the December 11th council. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
It was great.
Thank you all that.
Very well done. Thank you, Natalie, for all your work. Okay, we are at, we at additions?
We're around.
Well, let's aim to get out by three. Well, into the, in camera. Okay? No, I-
Previously distributed.
Okay, previously distributed, there's nothing we have to do there, right? Okay, additions, 10A, collection of source-separated municipal solid waste tender. Want this?
Yep. Sorry.
Got one?
Right.
Go ahead, C.A.O.
Thank you, Worship. The tender for collection of source-separated municipal solid waste for the town of Yarmouth was advertised on the procurement website and in the Vanguard. That was the Nova Scotia procurement website, government procurement. One response was received from WasteCo Limited, who provide the service for the previous five-year contract, and the results are outlined in the engineer's report. After reviewing, he is recommending that it be accepted, and so I think I, Your Worship, I think I heard a motion made.
You did, Counselor Mackay-Zach.
Seconded.
Seconded, questions being called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried, and go ahead, C.A.O.
Thank you. Tenders were advertised on the provincial procurement site and on the town's website for the supply of a full-size extended cab pickup truck for operational services, as well as the wastewater treatment plant. Pricing include both leasing for a three-year term and straight purchase pricing. Two responses.
Okay, Murray GM at 26, 285. So moved. Go ahead, Counselor.
Am I reading this, are we, is there apples and oranges here? Are we leasing or are we purchasing? Because what are we accepting? Are we accepting the lease or are we accepting the purchase? I'm confused here. Well, there's no, there's, what's the point? There's two things, there's a lease and there's a purchase.
It says that it is recommended that we lease the two pickup trucks.
Okay. So that's the recommendation? Okay, good.
Do I have a question?
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Your Worship. The Silverado and the Sierra, the other two trucks, they're also 2015 models, are they?
Just checking, thank you. Moved and seconded. Who seconded that?
I did.
Okay, moved and seconded, questions being called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Fracking, Counselor Mooney? What you got to say without your motion?
Huh?
What have you got to say without your motion?
You know, it's, well, municipal government, municipal government doesn't operate on timelines, you know that better than anybody. It doesn't rain from eight o'clock in the morning till four o'clock in the afternoon, so anybody has flooding issues can call Town Hall and get an answer. We know that rain happens at nighttime. Rain happens on the weekend, snow happens on the weekend. We can't control Mother Nature, Your Worship, right?
Exactly.
And municipal government's the same way.
Are you saying you're up there with Mother Nature?
If anybody's read the paper over the last couple of days, there's been a very interesting situation in Amherst, and there's an opportunity for the town of Yarmouth to maybe generate some revenue outside of a normal revenue stream, and that the town of Yarmouth has nixed the fracking or the disposal of the fracking water in their utility. So I'd like to make a motion that the, make a motion, staff explore the opportunity in working with Atlantic Industrial Services of DeBert, in the disposing of fracking water within the Yarmouth Water Utility or related entity. We thought you were going to get out before three o'clock, but if there's not a seconded, then we don't have to worry about. And I'm not going to say that we can do it or we can't do it. I'm not going to say that we have the wherewithal to do it, so I would have liked to have the expert here, I'd like to have, would have liked to have Dave here, but there's an opportunity, Your Worship, there's a half a million dollars sitting on the table. They, I've talked to, talked to counselors at the, from Amherst that were at the UNSM, and the reason they were there against it is because of public pressure, but some of them read the science, they gave them scientific research, just said this water was treated, it was, it was good to go through the system. They said you could probably drink the water once it came out. once it came out of the, uh, once it got purified and treated, so I'm not saying that we're gonna do it, or we don't do it, but let's explore the opportunity to, to see if it's worth it, I don't know if this is a one-shot opportunity, I don't know if we can handle the capacity, I don't know that, so I know if Dave was here, he'd be able to answer that question, and Jeff's probably trying to hit himself in the head with a hammer right now, but, uh, just, uh, it's moved and seconded, just maybe some direction from the CAO.
I'm gonna let the CAO answer that, is that okay, counselor? And then, you're good, you're good, though.
So I haven't read the news, so Amherst has voted against it?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I could get, I could get some information from their CAO related to it, I did have a conversation at the UNSM about it, and I believe the, I believe the water wasn't even required to go through their treatment facility, just through their system to an outfall.
Counselor Langel?
The motion, um, that was read, I'm confused, I hear the word water utility, my ears perked up, because this is a meeting of council, so my first question is...
Uh, wastewater.
He's referring to wastewater, so the intention would be, is that would go through our wastewater plant hypothetically, that can almost barely stand to handle what we have now, and considering the, I had an item on the agenda about that, because the, shall we say, the color of our water, and the texture of, I use the word texture of our water in the harbors, far from appealing in my walks, and it seems to be getting murkier and murkier and cloudier and cloudier, um, and now we're gonna be pumping, uh, something else in there. Anyway, I, uh, I'd be curious on the research, but I definitely am not overly excited, and I don't know what's in this stuff, or what's involved with this stuff, but as a dear friend of mine commented, I can't see anything good coming out of this one, uh, other than a check, and I'm wondering if we need that check that bad, uh, so, I, I mean, it'd be curious on it, I do know the CAO of Amherst was disappointed with the council decision, um, and I do know the mayor was disappointed with the council decision, uh, but on the other hand, um, you know, you could have some old grouchy counselors who may not have enough information in front of them, however, I also can see realistically, and I don't wanna be defeatist here, uh, the financial feasibility of trucking down half a million gallons, or how many gallons it is of that stuff, through the south shore to Yarmouth to drop it off, uh, I'm assuming there may be other communities that would be a little bit more cheaper for, uh, for movement, so, I, I agree, it's an interesting thing, but the question's asked, but I think we need a little research, so I'd like to make a motion that we refer...
You got a motion on it?
No, no, I'm gonna make a, no, I'm making a motion to table this motion until the next council meeting, to give staff time to give us report, because I can't vote on this, and I don't even know if it's worth, we have, this is a prime example of motions that we should have advance notice of, I mean, this is a very controversial issue, and I, I really think I'd like to make a motion that we table this motion the next council, to give staff time, uh, to give us the necessary background.
You can't table it to the council meeting, but you could...
Defer it? We can defer it?
You could defer it to the council.
Defer it?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I, I agree, 'cause I, I just don't understand it, go ahead, deputy.
So, the table of motion that Candace suggesting...
Yeah.
...deferring, precludes, uh, that wasn't the intent of Philip's motion, it was, it was to investigate.
Investigate, yeah.
And, and, uh, so that's all I was thinking of, and in fact, I wondered about that, you know, when it was first announced, that Amherst had this oppo, had an opportunity, and they have since turned it down, as, as Philip has, demanded to us, but, anyway, I'll, I'll let it go for now, but I would like to investigate, somehow have the right people help us out.
So, so deferring it isn't saying no, it's just, for, for me, I agree with Counselor Langel, I just need more information before he sends staff on a, on a, on a hunt to, um, so I'm good with the deferring.
Thank you, worship, well, I guess, if I'm wrong, Counselor Mooney, you can, you can correct me, but I, you, I thought you did say that you wanted counsel, uh, staff to research some information on it, we wasn't voting to accept it, or anything, just for information, and you're deferring the information that his motion, is that, will that make his redundant, and yours supersede the, the information part of it, and if it does, you're going through two processes, we're asking staff to get some information on it, so we can make a decision on, on, on his, on his first motion, that's what I thought, that's why I seconded for discussion, I could be wrong, which I've been wrong before, so...
I think the intent of my deferring is to give the CAO an opportunity to pick up the phone, phone Amherst, to say, hey, what's going on, and to come back and tell us what's going on, the motion that was given was investigate, which was far more than picking up the phone and calling the CAO in Amherst, or explore, exploring means you're gonna be dealing with the company, you're gonna be talking to the company, you're gonna be looking at aspects of it, to me, an investigation is an investigation, if you're investigating a murder, you come back with the murderer, uh, if you're investigating this particular project, you're gonna come back, the CAO is well-known for his thoroughness, uh, he's gonna be spending a fair amount of time on this, whereas maybe it's a very quick and easy answer, and that's simply what I was inquiring here, because those words, explore and investigate, means a, a fair chunk of time, and I know how busy the CAO is, is now, and let alone dump something else in there, uh, let's just find very quickly what, what, what happened there, kind of a thing, I mean, and my goodness, we can do that ourselves, pick up the phone and call Amherst, and talk to one of the counselors up there, we know several of them, and say, why, why did you do what you did, but I hate to see staff spend a lot of time on something, but on the other hand, the CAO may come back, hey, this looks pretty good, we should be doing this, and then, yeah, let's go do the exploring investigation and meet with the company, if that's what his recommendation is.
Okay, Counselor Dallas?
Thank you, your worship, that's what, that's what my question was going to be, and my assumption was that the CAO would find out exactly, if, if Amherst, well, obviously, Amherst walked away from it, and the CAO would, would find out why, and, and let us know, and from that point on, we can then, let, then look into it even further, and then make a decision, yeah.
CAO? Yeah. The motion on the floor.
So what the expectation is, isn't what the motion says, the motion says you're deferring the matter until December 15th, or 13th, or 12th, or whatever.
11th.
11th, thank you, uh, so I, so I would wait and see what council's wish is on December the 11th, but if in fact, what you actually want is for, is for us to investigate why Amherst walked away from the opportunity...
Yes.
That's, that's a different matter, and maybe if that was the motion, that would be, then I, I would, I would know clearly what council wishes.
You want that motion?
Can't, can't have three motions.
Just clarity is all, just clarity.
Okay. How about this? You know, we can turn anything into rocket science at this table, something simple, seriously, no wonder we, but, but I understand both sides, I, I guess, we don't want staff to go off and spend a ton of time on something that, what's happened here is we just don't understand, so I would've made a couple calls myself, it's as simple as that. Counselor, Counselor Mooney, go ahead.
Well, it said, it said explore, I didn't say investigate, it said explore, so if, if the CAO, or the, or the mayor calls up either Atlantic Industrial Services and said we already got taken care of with somebody else, or calls up, uh, Amherst and asks them what happened, and just give you a little overview, and you came back and says it's worth our while, or not worth, worth our while, or talk to, uh, Mr. Ernst, and it, and if it goes through the, uh, water utility, or another related entity, and it's not worth our while, or we don't have the capacity, then that's exploring the issue.
Okay with that? Yeah, the scope, so what we're saying is, we don't need you to go into a great big, okay, right away.
And, uh, and if I noticed it in the newspaper, and Counselor McLeod noticed in the newspaper, there's probably other...
So, and everybody else.
And I don't know, it almost sounds like that stuff, because it happened in Nova Scotia, they won't take it, uh, in another jurisdiction, I mean, like in New Brunswick, so it'd probably have to be disposed of somewhere as in Nova Scotia, that's what it sounds like, so, there might be another jurisdiction town, or municipality, that might have the capacity of the wherewithal to take care of it, that is closer, so...
Okay, Counselor Langel?
And I hate to draw, I mean, we're looking at 300 million liters of water, 30 million liters of water, and I can be correct, but that's a fair chunk of water. Yeah, that's a lot of water, 30 million liters, it would be, uh, what do we, we do one million a day, gallons a day that comes to our facility, I believe, I'm not sure of the number, but I think it's around a million, so that would be the equivalent of 15, and I'm throwing ballpark between eight and 15 days' worth of water for the entire town of Yarmouth, so that's a lot of water, folks, I mean, and that's going somewhere, I can't even imagine them even shipping it here, but anyway, uh, I'm good with anything, to me, I think it's a, I think there's easier ways to make half a million dollars.
Okay, so, so what motion are we voting on now?
Motion to defer it to the council meeting.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table to defer it to the council meeting, which I don't think we need to do now. Yeah, he's clear on that, well, we can, whatever.
The first motion doesn't mean anything.
Doesn't that, we're, we're voting...
Staff isn't going to be messing around with this today.
You agree? We got the nod, we got the nod, so you're gonna remove your motion? Okay, everybody okay with that? Good, thank you, okay, so we're voting on Counselor Mooney's motion.
Did we hear the motion?
She has it almost.
Get it almost, staff explore the opportunity in working with Atlantic Industrial Services of DeBert in the disposing of fracking water within the Yarmouth Water Utility or related entities.
Okay. Just giving it, gonna give him a call and see what's, what's going on, very basic, just, okay? Okay, one more time.
Well, I, I got an issue with the motion, because basically, it's a one-sided thing, you're dealing with Atlantic fracking, I'd like to know why Amherst said no, I mean, that's critical.
Just withdraw, I'll, and I'll withdraw the second, I got, I got things to do.
Well, no, I'm just saying, I think if you want to explore, but I mean, the thing is, you gotta have a balance here, I mean, there's a reason why Amherst said no, and I'd like to know why Amherst said no, if we're saying to the CAO, he's gonna deal with Atlantic fracking only, only, then that's one-sided, we need boat, we need a little balance here.
Could you please call Amherst too, and find out why they said no? Okay? All right, we ready? Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Nay. Who's four? Against? Oh, four, I guess, not happening, all that, and it's not even happening. Stop that email! He was almost done. Okay, Atlantic Industrial Services, was, was that the same one? I had, I thought you had two motions.
No.
Oh, okay, sorry, all right, um, additions, anything else in camera? Motion to go in camera, please. Kevin, do you need? Okay?
I tell you, you never know what you're gonna get in that water. You read it up, I said, I'd worked in the oil field for 40 years, and I'm telling you, I've been, I've been, I've been to Agda, I've been to Albinga, I've seen what they've done, and when you do fracking, it all depends what kind of fracking, whether you pump the benzene down there and all the others, but they can pump down 100, 100 trucking hours, they only recover maybe six, eight, you know, you never know what you get, and, and out west, we put it to the steamer, for our chemical stuff, and then that just goes the gaps here, 'cause we don't have to take trucking, we don't have to make dirty things to get rid of it, you know what I mean? You never know what you get, and, 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 bring it down, that's meant with your, your whole tail, you never know what you get, trust me, it's not gonna be there. They're like the fishing, they're all a little line, but you're, you know, what's, you know, it's chemicals, and they say, we can break that, but it doesn't work in troll, forces I, I think, like, we're gonna link, so we got all the foundation in your house, they have to take all the trucking to troll, they give up your soil, what do you say, take it down to troll, and let it sit in the sun, and it, in the sun, and then all the back rays, and then they put it out in the fields, but they're, they're charging, you were fortunate to do that, and you dig it up, and do the same thing, but, man, different chemicals and stuff, and what in the nursery, girl, man, it's stuff, it really is.
What's going on, tell you going on?
I don't know, I just wanted to come here, and, and listen to some of the things, and ask the question. Say that, but, 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 he's got a good concept, I think, yeah, it's simple, simplistic, and I, I know, I said, you know, France, you could have different seasons, like you have the French, and, 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 but the same, same thing, simple, simplistic, colors.
Yeah.
I don't think we could, uh, if you know people come in here, and come this, and then they can find hotels and everything, we don't have, here's a seafood here, and we don't have to call...
He gave a great answer on the hub, too.
I'm thinking how many anchors we can have put around town.
Well, I just think it's, it's a matter of concept, and I like to think of the pride that Yarmouth's always had, that's something we've always had, you know, and I don't think you'll ever take that away from this area, I really don't. It's, it's a subject that comes, and we have to suck it in, swallow it up in some things, and you gotta, you gotta get over that, it's a mystery here, and, and, and that's bad, right? I mean, you're, you're, 15 Mead drivers, belongs to Mead, all of the PDI, you're in the game, uh, the doors, you're taking the Grand Hotel, you never again, I call up here, I spent the last week, I think I did, you know, you know...
We didn't have a hotel here, you know, while we were...
No, you were just talking about... Or talk about the Grand Hotel.
I wouldn't miss that part, and I didn't do, I can't say what I know, what I've seen, but, it ain't good, it is not, I, I didn't, didn't go to Alber, how they can go down here with you, there's, I don't know, so, whatever, that town, from, from that thing, and in the winter time, when it gets cold, you can walk right in, just look at it.
Yeah.
I mean, like, I pulled dead rocks up here, heavy, and, 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 and there never, we spent millions, we spent millions, to see how they could agree this, and, and ain't worth the cost, and they still haven't figured it out, you didn't just, you didn't have first, for the Canadian, we had the rust of the Chinese, we, don't worry, we veterans, we make, I make a nice, the oil field, it's made by, look how many buildings we've gone from Mexico.
The track?
Okay, and fracking, I'm not for that at all, especially if your, your groundwater is taken, wait, in DC, we're down, down, eight, 10,000 feet.
But if we get, we need this conversation for me, and you go fracking, but, but we're, like, this ended in Nova Scotia, like, like the rock formation, we're not...
Oh, yeah, you got coal, you got huge coal, you got, you got methane gas, and that's easy to get.
But is that not down the neck of the woods?
It's all over, no, no, it's all over, the fault runs from Newfoundland, right down off Yarmouth, eastern Seaport, down the eastern United States, dis oil field that's in Newfoundland, I don't know, I'm just breaking down, they're coming, yes, man, I drilled 11 in the Bay Finney, I drilled a well on George's Banks, I drove one off Hyannis Port, and one off Cape Cod, those four wells were explored over the outside, for 16,000 feet, and the cost size was over 20 million, or somewhere in there, but it wasn't much, it's proof that we wouldn't hurt the beach, the tourism, or the fishingings, they picked the spots where they knew there was nowhere, and all they was to do was check geology, and prove, prove to the, to the, the people, that in Rhode Island, and here, and everything else, can we drill those things? Yeah, we can, but I'm gonna tell you something, you watch, and I slay it, watch those, it's not very interesting, it's really interesting, all these wells, if you drill that, are 8,500 feet water, and all that, it's proven that the cement's gonna break down, the cement jobs, and that seals well, and, 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 it's gonna happen, there's no way around it's happening, like, if you watch, they, 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 I know, I know, they did, and, 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 but, but, we used to test some, like, today.
We good? We good?
You...you should take the foundation there, so they can...
Hold it, hold it, wait. Okay, I'll pick one. We'll talk to you next time.
Take care.